Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the November 13th, 2018 council meeting together. The first thing we do is we're gonna do invocation for Mr. Pia and then we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople in helping to make our town a better place in which to live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask everybody to stand for a second? We're gonna do a moment of silence for the California fire victims. Okay, thank you. First thing, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, 2018?
So moved.
Mr. Pia moved. Is there a second, Mr. O'Brien? Is there any discussion about the minutes? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero.
Well, one opposed, because I wasn't here, I can't vote on something I didn't know.
Okay, I can stand corrected. Nine, four, and one opposed with Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. Not really opposed, abstain. Thank you. Just a correction.
Correction again. Nine As and one abstination. Okay, now we'd like to get ceremonial presentations. Mayor, would you like to go down front?
Thank you, Council Chair. If Chief McNeil would come forward and introduce Rachel Silveira, Animal Control Officer.
Yes, Rachel just received an award. She's been Assistant Animal Control Officer for Fairfield from 97 to 2006. She was Animal Control Officer for Stratford from 2006 to 2018. Some of her awards she's received is Save the Sound Volunteer of the Year in 2006, Connecticut Municipal Animal Control Officer Association, Animal Law Enforcement Officer of the Year in 2012, Certificate of Recognition for Detention to Duty and Performance during Hurricane Sandy, which I do remember she did a fantastic job, National Animal Care and Control Association, Outstanding Animal Care and Control Agency Award for 2015, and she received it again for 2018 from the National Animal Care and Control Association, Animal Care and Control Employee of the Year for 2018. And she's just been a phenomenal employee and done a fantastic job for us. And I want to call her up here and thank you for her service.
Stephen Johnson, he's our new Public Safety Telecommunications Supervisor. He comes with a lot of experience both in Public Safety Telecommunications, EMS Corrections, and Security. And one of the things that he's tasked with doing for the Dispatch Center is quality improvement and training to help keep the caliber of the public safety staff in dispatch at the highest caliber. He's been an excellent hire. We just sent him to the Communication Center Manager Course out in Utah. It's an international training. And during that training, he was given the Carlin Page Award, which is awarded to one recipient every year, somebody who exemplifies leadership, dedication, and high caliber performance in the Communication Center. So just have Steve come up to introduce him.
With Steve on behalf of townspeople of Stratford, we would like to recognize you for your professional excellence and for receiving the Carlin Page Award in terms of my leadership character as a volunteer in the community. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
First thing we have is a letter of resignation for John Mariam, the Longbrook Park Commission has expired, is November 6th. And the next thing, I'd like Dr. Robinson. Could you come up, Dr. Robinson, and give us a presentation?
Absolutely. Let me just start this around over here. Good evening, Chair.
Does that work?
Is it on? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and speak to you. Yeah, can you just move it a little bit? Thank you. That's great. Is that better? Okay. I wanted to come here tonight, as I have all but one year in the fall after we get our official October 1st enrollment, when I'm not asking the Council for a doggone thing. All right? I just wanted to share with you some data on our students and our school system and the things we're working on. I believe the school system gives you an indication of the demographics that are changing in Stratford. The census is every 10 years. Our count is every year and then ongoing monthly. And we are seeing tremendous changes in population, and I wanted to share some of that with you. I also wanted to share with you some of the goals of the system as we are implementing the second year of our five-year strategic plan. So rather than doing a PowerPoint, we went ahead and gave you something to look at. And I'd like to just go through some of the highlights here, and I'm not gonna read everything to you. You can look at it in your leisure. We have rebuilt or redesigned the mission statement during the strategic planning process. The mission of the Stratford School Community is to ensure that all students acquire the knowledge, character, and 21st century skills to succeed through high-quality learning experiences and community partnerships within a culture of diversity and respect. From that, our committee developed four goals, which then became action teams, and you'll see them connected. And by the way, there were over 100 people, community members and students, who participated in the development of these goals and then the action teams. We are now on our third iteration, and many people have been involved. We really appreciate the fact that when we ask community members come out, we have a lot of volunteers. Number one, we will strengthen family and community partnerships to ensure that every student has access to real-world learning and career opportunities. We've been very fortunate in Stratford that we have so many partners, the best program and banks that work on, come into our schools and work with financial literacy, and gives our students opportunities for internships and other things to build those world skills. We will engage and implement mastery-based learning, including high-quality instructional strategies and engaging content that reflects the diversity of all students. Mastery-based learning, you will see evolving over the next few years, rather than simply having students march through the same curriculum and the same grade levels, some learning, some not learning, we are moving toward a mastery-based progression. Students may move as fast or as slow as they need to. We're not there yet, but we're working on it. We will integrate 21st century skills into all classrooms, supported by a comprehensive assessment system. The 21st century skills are being embedded in all of our curriculum as curriculum is being written, and those include problem-solving, collaboration, communication, things that these students will need for those careers that probably don't even exist right now. We will implement a rigorous social curriculum to promote character development, social, emotional wellness, and positive behaviors. So you'll see there's some connection between Goal 1 and Goal 4, and connection between Goal 2 and Goal 3. So those are driving the work that we're doing. You will see that they will drive where we put our money in terms of spending to meet these goals, and it'll be an ongoing process as we move into Year 3. Next page gives you a snapshot of the Stratford Schools. October 1st is the official date for the state for our enrollment. It's like a snapshot on that date, so some of these are already old numbers because we enroll kids all year long. So there are 13 schools plus an alternative school, which is Alpha, including all students in Stratford, which includes those kids who may be currently at magnet schools, private schools, or tech schools, outplace for special ed purposes. We have 8,219 students. Forty-eight point 5 percent, and that's today's, I don't know what it'll be tomorrow, of our students are eligible for free or reduced lunch. This figure has gone up, as I look back on the records from 1997, this figure has gone up 2 percent per year. 60 percent overall in the district are minority students, with 65 percent in the elementary and 57 in the secondary. So you can see as the elementary enrollment increases in minority, they will move up into the upper grades, so you'll see that increase even more. Once again, if you look at the track record, that has increased approximately 2 to 3 percent per year. 5.45 percent of our students are English language learners. That's approximately 410 students. This is growing tremendously, so it's requiring more support. Unfortunately, the title grants that support ELL have not increased at all in amount. It's a very minimal amount, so we don't get a lot of support. So if, at times, we talk about unfunded mandates, this is one that really is not adequately funded. We have 49 languages that are spoken in our school system, which means they are spoken in our community. And we have increasing numbers coming in from different African nations with a variety of different dialects, too. 13 percent or 931 students are special education. That number is kinda high. The ideal number would be 10 percent, but the state is, it's not just Stratford, the state is seeing an increase in special ed. And so it's a matter of, a lot of our kids move in. By the way, we registered, over the summer, just before the school year started, we registered 874 students. And that does include kindergarten, but nonetheless, that's an incredible turnover in students. A number of students left, a number of students came in. I don't have all the data yet on where those students came from, but just anecdotally, I'll tell you, we have a large number of students coming in from New York City and New Jersey. So that's been quite an influx. Fifty-two percent of our population is male, 48 percent is female. We have, over the last two years of our valedictorian and salutatorian, those four students, three of them have gone to Harvard and one to Dartmouth, so we are quite proud of that. Our graduation rate is one of the highest in our Derg, and you see, you can see Banel is 100 percent. Stratford High School is right behind it. But our students are going on about 54, or excuse me, 52 to 53 percent are going to four-year I've given you a list of some of the top 10 languages spoken other than English. As you get into the full list, I can't even pronounce some of the languages. I don't know them. They're just things that are walking into our doors right now. So that means that we have some changes in cultures, we have a number of languages, and it seems to be that once a family member is in Stratford, then later other family members come and join them. So we will continue to see that. I have a chart there. If you'll look, you notice I have both sides, it's printed on both sides. So there's a chart now that shows you the, what we call district reference groups. Those are districts that are like Stratford in socioeconomic demographics. And I'm looking at our economics in terms of our Derg. Stratford spends $16,026 per pupil. So you can see that we are toward the bottom half of per pupil expenditure out of our Derg. I think Bloomfield's a little off the charts there. Yeah, I don't know what they do with their money. But in our surrounding districts, Milford, Fairfield, Trumbull, Shelton, and Bridgeport, we are third from the bottom with our $16,026. The next one will give you a graph of our itemized estimate of expenditures, which then becomes our budget after it goes through the process and your approval. And you'll see that 61.25 percent of that, of those expenditures are salaries. So along with that, the next biggest item are benefits. So just, it doesn't give us a lot of leeway, not a lot of discretionary spending. When we sorted through and came up with unfunded mandates, we had probably four pages of unfunded mandates. So on the chart here, there are just a few of our top unfunded mandates that you see here in these bubbles. Magnet school tuition is very big for us. That cost us a great deal. High school reform is not nearly as expensive as it started out to be, but the students who are currently in eighth grade, next year as they enter ninth grade, they will have to take an increase in classes. Increase in classes means increase in teachers. And so that will be, once again, an unfunded mandate. So you can see the testing in-school suspension. We have new legislation on expulsion. We've had a banner, I'm being sarcastic, start to this school year with not things that occurred in our schools, but things that occurred over the summer. We've had 12 expulsions already. The new law requires that those students must be educated at the same, with the same abilities as students who are in school. In other words, if it's six hours you go to school, you must go to school six hours even though you're expelled. Formerly, the law only required 10 hours maximum per week of tutoring. That's now changed. So there's a big cost now that goes with those expulsions. So it's now, and it's like, where do we put them, too? They must have an individualized plan. We have to supply teachers that will teach their content areas. We have to supply some psychological interventions on a regular basis, so it's costly. So they're good things for kids that have been problematic, but they are costly. Assessments. We are definitely held, our feet are held to the fire in terms of accountability. And this just gives you an overall. It would look a little different if we'd broken it down, third grade to sixth, and then seventh and eighth, because frankly, our third grade to sixth is making great progress. Seven and eight, as most of you know, seventh and eighth graders, the progress sort of levels out. They're plateaus at that rate. By putting third to eighth together, it diminishes some of that progress a little bit. So we've struggled. We've been working hard, and we're starting now to begin to see the effect in math at the elementary level. And we're seeing the effect in ELA very much in the elementary, and we're now doing the same work at seventh and eighth grade, so we expect that to go up also. Science was not tested this past year. It was the pilot year, so it will be tested this next year, fifth and eighth grade. CAPT and SAT are used, CAPT used to be used for the high school. It's now SAT that is used, starting in 2016. So you'll see that we do have some work ahead of us in terms of dealing with the SAT scores. The ELA is in the 60 to 50 range, and the math, 28, 28.7, 27.4. We approximately 50 percent of our seniors started with us. That means 50 percent have come in from someplace else. There's a big transition point at ninth grade. So one of the problems we are struggling with is how to catch up all those students that move in. We began five years ago doing a screening with STAR, which is a short, quick assessment. Gives us a reading in math when they come in, so that we can have some idea what we need to work on with the kids coming in, but it's been still a struggle to bring those kids up to speed. When we factor out, when we look at and drill down on the data, and we have the students that have been with us since kindergarten, they, their assessment results are quite high. They do well. So we know that it's not the curriculum problem, it's a problem of trans vacancy that we're dealing with, and we've got to find a way to bring those kids up as quickly as possible. So it'll be a challenge as we continue to have that, what I refer to very professionally as churn, particularly at the elementary grades. We have kids in and kids out. I gave you a little summary of our facilities, just as a reminder, so in case you needed to know the classrooms and the enrollment of each of the schools. As you know, the Board of Ed decided in May to return to neighborhood schools, and that has shifted the numbers considerably. So at one point, Second Hill Lane had 700 students. It's now down to 300 and something now. The biggest enrollment is at Johnson Academy, is those neighborhood schools are absorbing their local kids. So we're having to reshuffle some of our resources to meet that, but I thought you might find it interesting. And if not, you're having trouble sleeping, you might want to just read through the facilities data. Might help you out. Lordship used to be a very small school, but Lordship is right up there with the others with 305 students. So you'll see, and they don't have that many classrooms, so that's max they can go. Second Hill Lane now is at 492, so we've dropped considerably from the 700. I put Victoria Soto School and Johnson together because as we discuss their enrollment and so forth, we look at them very much as being together. Soto this year went to pre-K kindergarten and first grade. The second grade had to be moved up to Johnson Academy. So that's a little change. We still have the number of 280 students per Soto, which we will need to have when that facility gets audited. Just note, Will Coxon is at a max. It has 382 students. But Will Coxon is this wonderful school that doesn't have very big classrooms, has very small classrooms. So many of those classrooms are limited, they cannot go up any further. Flood, our most expensive school to operate, and Worcester are both running over 500 students. Banel is 1,074, and Stratford High School is just below 1,000. Now, speaking of Stratford High School, the word is that we will be moving our students at Stratford High School into the new building over Thanksgiving break. I never believed it would happen. I'm still a little nervous about that. But they say it can be done, and as soon as the students are moved over to the new building, Turner will begin getting into the old building and start that renovation. So that is moving along, and we will be talking about when we might do something ceremonial and invite the public in to see the school. Would love to do that. I gave you details of the enrollment as of October 1st, so you can peruse that and see that, you know, even though I told you we had over 8,000 students, you can see on the second from the right column, our in-district total is 6,772. So with that, other things that you might like to know that I may not have covered here.
Anybody got any questions for Dr. Robinson?
Yes?
Councilor Kadim?
That 8219, does that include like students that go to St. James, St. Mark's, Notre Dame, Prep, and all that?
It includes all of our resident, Stratford residents.
Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Chair. How are you, Dr. Robinson? It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too, Wally.
I think you guys are doing the best you can do with what you got, and I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Question I had also was, with the neighborhood change, how's that affecting? I recognize you're missing a lot of students in some schools, and some are overloaded. What is the morale like? Is it, does it level out? Is it positive? I mean, because I know how that could be.
It is reaching a leveling out point. It was a very sudden move. Normally, you would have done other kinds of things to have community forums and so forth to discuss this, but it was a very sudden move, driven by the need to cut back on busing. I was at a couple of the schools the first day. I started at Johnson Academy. Kids coming in, greeting the front door and talking to them while they're waiting to go in. They were from all different schools, and they were excited, and they were happy, and the kids are doing fine. I think it was harder for families to have to readjust their schedules and how they were going to get kids to school. But it seems that a lot of that has been taken care of by this time.
Reason why I ask, because the constituent asked me about their child being in Second Hill Lane or being in one of the other district areas, and they wanted to finish out, you know, go finish the sixth grade. They was in the fifth or sixth or something, one of those schools, and they wanted to finish out. Do you believe that it will stay this way, or is this something, just a trial period, or just something to see about economically, how could you move forward to where the buses will be reinstalled and be able to, you know, what you did last time was trying to keep it balanced. Do you think that's something that we'll be going back to at some point, or you think that this is going to stay this way?
It's a combination of the two. Because as we go along, we have to always keep monitoring the numbers, and I think as we go along, there's going to be some busing of students to equalize numbers, but not to the extent that we had it before. We won't have students on buses for 45 minutes, but there will have to be. We have to keep our numbers within 25 either side of that 60. So that means it has to be between 35 and 85 percent minority. So there'll be some times that we will have to do some busing. Hopefully, it'll be not a big process, but, you know, a process nonetheless that we can make sure that we're watching those numbers.
Real quickly, were you able to accommodate the parents that wanted their child to finish their last year in the different schools?
We did try to, yes. Those parents that were, especially the sixth-grade parents, that one of their children to stay, whenever we could, we allowed them to stay to finish out that year, so they wouldn't move this year and then next year. In some cases, there simply wasn't room.
Okay, because I will have a community meeting at some point. Hope I can give you a call, see if you come there.
Sure.
Because they asked me all these questions about school. I cannot answer them, not because of the fact that I'm not in the school system, so I wouldn't know. My children are in the school system, and I like Stratford's school system. So thank you very much for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Pia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Dr. Robinson, how are you?
Good, Chris. How are you?
Doing well. Just two quick questions. The first one, you said Lordship Schools max is 305. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know that. The other question I had for you was, because I haven't had the opportunity to speak with you guys over the last year on this, is the residency check program. How are we doing with that? Where does it stand? How many amount of checks are we doing on a weekly, monthly basis? How, how many amount of checks are we doing on a weekly, monthly basis? What's it yielding?
Well, we probably have, I'm going to say probably seven checks going on right now.
Okay.
This, this week. And what those tend to be, those tend to be people who were here legitimately registered. Because when they register, they have to show either their lease or their mortgage or some signature that they have, that they have bought a house here. And a couple of utility bills. So they, they come in, and in many cases, we have a large number of people who are now renting homes where they used to be families living there as, as full-time residents. The problem we run into is after they're there a while, they may not be there anymore. And so, then we have to check on those. The way we tend to find out is somebody lets us know. You know, I had a student who got in trouble the other day. And as they checked and tracked down the parent, they found out they were living in Bridgeport. So those are the things that start to come up. So I would say that probably there's three visits a day, not necessarily every day, but as need.
So, let me just ask you a question as a follow-up to that. The comment you made about the student the other day, and you found out they were living in Bridgeport. What steps do we then take? Do we remove the child from the school or what steps do we then take?
Immediately, we send them a letter saying they're disenrolled. The letter goes to the superintendent, in this case, to the superintendent in Bridgeport, whatever district we believe they're in, so the superintendent's notified that they have been disenrolled in our school system.
Okay. And regarding the resources that you have, I don't know who's in charge of it or how, the amount of personnel from the Board of Ed, but do you feel, do you feel we have sufficient, you have sufficient resources to keep this residency program on track, I guess? Residency check program, excuse me.
Right, right now, we do.
Okay.
Right now, we do. It's, the thing that's difficult, we keep running into is the McKinney-Vento bill. Now, McKinney-Vento bill is a federal law that says that if anyone is displaced or doubled up, they're in a temporary housing situation. Regardless of where they are, they still belong to the school district that they lived in when they went homeless. So, we do have a number of students. I get calls frequently. I know so-and-so is not living in Stratford. But the problem is, is they're, they're homeless and we have to, we have to service them. I frequently call the state, because among my other jobs, I'm also the homeless liaison. So, I frequently call the state. For how long is a temporary situation temporary? How long before it becomes permanent? So, the advice that I got at the state, they said the federal law doesn't speak to that. I said, "Well, if somebody's been there for the entire school year, isn't that adequate?" And they said, "Well, give it a try." And that's what we do at the end of the year. If they're still listed as homeless, we just tell them they are disenrolled at that time. And many do enroll in the other district.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Robinson? Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Dr. Robinson.
Hi, how are you?
Pretty good. A couple of statements and a couple of questions, please. The pure per pupil, per year expenditures, the sixteen thousand twenty-six that you've documented here, that was last year's number, what we'll call fiscal year 2008.
It's, they're actually, on the state website, they're actually a year more behind.
And since then, the council has approved two additional budgets. So, the, this year, the per pupil expenditures are, I don't want to say substantially higher, but are measurably higher than the sixteen thousand dollars that you've documented here.
I don't know the answer, because the formulas they use aren't a simple formula. So, we don't even try to calculate what the per pupil expenditure is. But it take, it would take a very sizable increase to have a percentage of budget to have a big increase there.
Do you have a year-over-year impact of the per pupil expenditures that the Board of Ed has received?
Excuse me, explain what you mean by impact.
If, if we were to say that on a per pupil basis, the town has increased its funding to the Board of Ed by thirty-seven percent over the last eight years.
Okay.
And those are numbers from the state. The point, by, by mentioning that, I'd ask that, it's a phrase of showing our work. You know, every student has to show their work, you know, how they set their goal, how they accomplish the task. And one, one item I'm hoping for from the Board of Ed is, aside from financial accountability, which I believe the current board has taken a big step in terms of having a monthly financial summary report of expenditures. And they've also accepted their requirement to vote on every budget transfer.
Right.
Which is something that was likely neglected the last few years. So there's going to be an increase in transparency. So I want to thank the board and thank you for that. I, I'll use the example of busing, that there was a study four years ago, approximately, excuse me for not being perfect with the, that may have estimated a two-point-five million dollar savings if certain structural changes were made in busing. And the environment made many of those changes impossible. So, in an ideal world, maybe we could have saved two-point-five million four years ago. This year, we made some changes that possibly saved a half million with some disruption. So I, what I'm hoping for from you as kind of our sole proprietor of our public school system is more ideas like the busing situation, like the portable classrooms, like energy efficiency, many others, where that investment is going to lead to a big increase in academic performance. For example, the math tutors that you demonstrated here. Or into increased efficiencies or reduced costs, such as the busing, because people are more neighborhood school. Those were the observations I wanted to make. And I want to thank you for the progress that the current board has made in terms of financial. And let's look for some big ideas for efficiencies and...
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one last call for Dr. Robinson. Okay, Bill?
I have a few more things, but I'll save those for the liaison committee meetings. But can you just tell the members who probably don't know too much about the demand for after-school programs? That Board of Ed's collaborating with Sterling House, the YMCA, Southend Community Center. Talk about that demand.
It really, it is, the demand is not being met currently in the, in the town. We have so many students that need after-school care. But it was interesting, and one of the things that we overlooked in terms of cutting back on, on the buses, was that, that they weren't busing the students to Sterling House or other places that they needed to go. And we, we talked to the bus company. They haven't been happy, probably because they're losing a great deal here and they're losing a great deal in Shelton. And they said, "Well, we're not going to drop them off anymore." And they've always been a good partner for us. We, we support Sterling House. Sterling House is, is very good to our kids. And here, we couldn't get the kids over to Sterling House for after-school care or to the Y. And I said, "Well, you have to go south to go back to your depot. You have to do that." Well, that's not the route we're taking. So we had to make a demand that they went down Main Street, so we could drop off the kids that needed to be there. And it's, it's, it's a good, a good situation for, for the kids now. And we're very grateful for what Sterling House is doing for our kids.
Does the contract for bus services go out every so many years or is it?
Yes, it went out about two years ago. And it will go out again. Actually, we haven't signed the contract. We never signed this contract. We've been working with them without a signed contract for this, for the last year. So, so that's, that's something that we talk about. Thank you.
All right, thank you for, Dr. Robinson, for all that information.
Well, it's my pleasure. And Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with the council. And if council members have further questions, please give them to the Chair and I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is the mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. So there have been a lot of, there's a lot of activity going on as we get ready for the winter season. We have traveled to an EPA conference in October. There have been several festivals and events. The Great Pumpkin Festival was very well attended. We had Vicki Soto race on November third. We had Mayor for a Day, Jack Toth, visiting us on October twenty-sixth. Lordship Improvement Association dedication at Ashley Ackley Park on November fourth. We honored the outgoing BRBC President and CEO, Mickey Herbert, and welcomed the new Dan Donofrio. We toured Stratford High School on Friday. It's a beautiful building. Can't wait for all of you to see it. And Alan will report on it, I'm sure, at the Building Needs Committee. We attended Bennell's Veterans Luncheon on November ninth, which was Friday, and the Veterans Ceremony on the eleventh at Academy Hill. Since January 2018, we have milled and paved just under twelve miles of roadway for Public Works. We've expanded the Public Works Facility parking lot, which has gotten some vehicles off the street. The bid for the Booth Clark Clock Tower, Booth Park Clock Tower, that needs repair was out this week. The repair is approximately fifty thousand dollars. We budgeted a hundred thousand, so you can breathe deeply there. Public Works Fence Replacement on East Main Street on that side of the property. The Penders Field Scoreboard has been replaced. We are still working on the Penders Field fencing project. Since August first, eighty-five trees have been removed by our tree crews and contractor. Eighty stumps have been removed by the contractors at that time. Shore Beach Irrigation is being developed with consulting engineers. And approximately ninety-six hundred feet, linear feet of concrete sidewalk have been replaced. Center School Demolition has already started. The demolition has started in the rear of the building. And Ty and Bond is monitoring the air quality along with the Health Department. Demolition materials will be piled on-site in a waste stream and hauled off to the building when it is completely down, which will be about three or four weeks. Forty-one Big Belly Solar Compacting Trash and Recycling Containers were placed throughout town. The high-capacity trash cans use solar energy and will automatically compact the trash at the point of disposal. Each capacity for the can is five times greater than what an ordinary trash can would be. And Public Works crews consequently are having to empty them less than they did before. So, we have a little more efficiency for labor. They are communicating via Wi-Fi, so that the, that communication is sent to Public Works when the receptacles need to be emptied. And I'd like to just point out that the Stratford Green Task Force was the body that identified as kind of receptacle and have been honest for a little over a year about getting, getting it going. So that was a really great thing to have. We have some new hires that are assisting Jay Wahlberg in Finance, our Assistant Finance Director, Don Savo, and Purchasing Agent Phil Ryan. Courtesy of Chief McNeil, we, he is utilizing his budget expertise as being a former public accountant. And he found enough money to have an SRO deployed for five of the elementary schools, which is really important considering the, the struggle or the transition that the kids, teachers are going through. And it's nice to have that presence in the building, presence in the building. Upcoming events, we have the Thanksgiving football game on Thursday, the twenty, Wednesday, the twenty-first at seven o'clock at Bennell High School. We will have tickets for all of you before then, so let us know how many tickets you want for the game. Shop Small Saturday is the day after, Saturday after Thanksgiving, which is the twenty-fourth. The Tree Lighting Festival will be November twenty-eighth. I know on, on communications, you'll see it was supposed to be Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, but there was a miscommunication and the public schools have elementary school conferences that day. So, we've decided, instead of trying to rearrange nine schools of, nine schools elementary, nine elementary schools, parent-teacher conferences in the evening, that we would move the Tree Lighting Festival, the Holiday Lighting Festival. So, we are doing that. So if you hear complaints, just send them to the office, because it is November twenty-eighth. It's Wednesday. It was going to be a little hard, because we were having the elementary schools perform and the kids couldn't be here because the parents were in the conferences. So it was just like, it's going to start, the first thing, it starts like at four o'clock at the library with some things, and then the activities start here at four-thirty. And there's a schedule that we'll send out to you in the pony. The menorah lighting is December third at six o'clock. And if, if you didn't attend last year, Rabbi Stock brings his menorah that's got to be at least twelve feet high. He has, has a ladder that he stands on and he uses road flares to light it. So it's kind of very cool. So it's a nice thing to, to see. And then, if I don't see you before Thanksgiving, if I don't see you at the game, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Councilman?
Two questions, a short one, on the SRO. Five separate hires, one for each of five.
One hire, five days a week, each school.
We'll, we'll move around, okay? Thank you, Laura. And Wi-Fi with the Big Belly, it made me think of security at some of our town parks where we may want a security camera. Now, the bandwidth on a security camera with video is going to be a lot bigger than a little Wi-Fi signal. But what's the town's plans for capacity to have more video surveillance at parks and other areas of?
Good question. So, video surveillance, you know what the biggest demand is for? It's for speeding. If, if the State of Connecticut, if the General Assembly ever allowed cameras on the roads to, to be used to stop speeding, that would probably be a big enhancement for our law enforcement. Because at this point in time, we don't have, well, we have a lot of patrol cars, but we wouldn't have that many more that we would need for the high areas of speeding. And it's not just one area of town, it's all over town that people are complaining about. So, I do know that the video cameras that we've talked about, especially when there have been areas of concern, unfortunately, at the Big Belly level, which is only three feet off the ground, it's not really high enough. They usually like them higher. But I can get more information. We can ask the Public Safety Director this, and maybe at Public Safety, we could actually talk about it. Would that be all right, Bill? Okay.
Any other questions for the mayor? Yes, Wally?
Thank you, Chair. Just, I was trying to jot down the dates, that's the first thing. So, the, how do you say it? The menorah lighting, December?
The menorah?
The menorah, I'm, there you go. December third? Thank you. And what time usually about? Six PM. And the football is, is Wednesday, November what?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
At seven.
Seven PM. Also, I'm sorry.
But usually, the high schools, the athletic directors and the principals usually have some kind of little, I don't, I don't want to say a reception, but just a welcome. So it may be before seven o'clock. Seven o'clock is kickoff.
Kickoff.
So maybe six-thirty.
All right, thank you. Also, it's a lot, there's been a lot of activity. I'm quite sure everybody's been noticing in, in their districts. Just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing with the streets and the neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All righty. So, committee reports, there's none. We're going to four-point-three-one Ordinance Committee. Ms. Stancio?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that, that it be resolved that the ordinance regarding illicit discharge and connection of storm water that was discussed by the Ordinance Committee at our meeting on October twenty-second be approved and that the second reading of the above entitled ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members. And that the same be adopted as a second reading and the foregoing be and is hereby approved effective thirty days from passage.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second, that.
A second from Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion?
Through the Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dean.
When we was discussing it in ordinance, is, there was, there was information or we, we came to an understanding that it's not for family members or personal house owners. So, that's a good thing. But I was reading a lot of, a lot of the breakdown in the language. And where do we at here?
we at here? Oh, over here, when they say where the enforcement is at, I think it's fourteen, Section fourteen, it was speaking a little bit about how much time they have to reply to it, and a lot of times, you won't know if they even have the complaint, so I want to know if there's something in place to where we know when they received it, by either they responded, or they signed any paper that it was delivered to them, so that they have the oppor- the opportunity within the seven days, because seven days is a short turnaround, seven days to respond to it, and then it's ten days from that date, receipt of notice of the appeal. So they have, you know, seven days from, ten days from the seven days, they, they can appeal whatever it is that they're fighting against, whatever they put in the water or the drain. So I was curious to know, how do they, how do they monitor that? Like, say, they, do, do they get a ticket right on the spot, or do they, is it an email? Is it, you know, the infraction? How do they first be notified, and that we know that they received it? Do they, are they signing a mail, a letter? Like, you know how you get registered mail, and you sign off that you had received the letter? So we would know that, okay, this date you receive this, so seven days from here, we'll react or respond, and then ten days to appeal.
I, I think the first question is, who actually serves it, correct?
Yeah, well, it, it says Chief's Administrative Officer of the Town. So I, I don't, I'm, like I said, this is new area, quite naturally, because we didn't deal with this council prior to this, and this is something having to do with polluting the, our, our drains, you know, so it's good to know what's going on, and how do we proceed? Because you, if you have a business like the cars, that wash cars, they use chemicals all the time, so quite naturally, they deal with the EPA more so than ourselves. We don't have that kind of, or, or painting business, who have to wash out paint and so forth, and dispose of it and so forth. So these are things that they'll be dealing with, more so than anyone else. Or companies that wash their trucks in the driveway, we don't know the kind of chemicals they're using, how it affects our drain, but all the money that we're spending with our pumps for our water treatment plant, we really, it's important to have this.
And I, I just want to ask, Mr. Timniak, could you answer this question? Because I see you as the authorized enforcement agency. Who, who actually serves it? I don't think you're running around.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the authorized enforcement agency is the Conservation Department. Mr. Timniak fulfills the-
The Appeal Bro.
Right, the, the, he's the Appeals Officer.
That's the way I understand it as well.
That's the way I understand it too. So the question is, you said the Conservation Office?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Dr. Beto.
Okay. That's, you understand, Mr. Kadeen? I was-
Yeah, I understand that, but, but it's so much, if you, like, when you look over the legal breakdown, not being a lawyer, you have to have an understanding of what you're looking at. So some of it is self-explanatory, some of it is wordy. So you, I just want to be clear, that the people who are gonna be affected by it, I'm happy that it's not residents, because, you know, we have no idea, we wash our cars, and we try to keep our house the best we can. But in terms of the businesses that are here, and those are coming in, you want to be business-friendly, so you want to be clear with them what their responsibilities are. So I'm just speaking of it, because they have a lot, where I'm at, is like, they, they told me, I wish I knew that before I bought my house, that is an industrial area, so there's a lot of businesses wrapped around us, doing so many different things. So I just want to be able to, if I have a community meeting, someone come out and they ask me, "Hey, you know, what's going on with this new ordinance that you voted on?", I have to be able to answer that.
Okay.
Because, you know, I'm like, I'm really community-based, people knock on my door when they have a problem. "Hey, Wally, what's going on?". I mean, they, they don't wait for no meeting, they knock right on my door, so I want to, I want to address it prior to that happening. Also, when you look at the legal, the legal cost, and then you say, down here, when you say Section seventeen, where it's a hundred dollars each day, I mean, like I said, that's why it's important to know when they have their fraction, because that becomes very costly. And how long do they actually have to, you know, fulfill it? And, and like I said, I just, I read the whole thing, and, and I looked at it, and I say, administrative legal cost, you have to pay also the legal cost. So they're paying, not only for the infraction, but they're paying the lawyers from our side, from the town, to go out and, you know, fight this or put it together. So there's a whole, there's a whole lot of stuff in here to vote right away, I think you should look at this again.
Okay.
That's just me, but I'm just, you got, this is discussion, correct?
Yep, this discussion.
And I'm discussing this, is that all right?
That's right.
All right, so I just want to make sure-
Okay, any other-
Then it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars each day, such violation continues.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this, and I don't have the, I don't have the notes in front of me, but this passed through ordinance already, where-
Yes.
-this conversation was had, and everything was discussed at the time, so-
I think what we're, what we're doing right now is exactly discussing and closing this.
And that's fine.
Any other discussions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in order to alleviate some of Councilman Kadeem's concerns, the notice of violation will consist of not only direct, an acknowledgement that the violation is being committed, but a directive to alleviate it or to cure it within a certain period of time. So it's only after that cure period is, has been used up, and the violation is not cured, that's when the penalties start going.
Does that- I understand that. And then, over here in Section eleven, where it says, "Every person owning property through which, which the, the water, the water course passes shall keep-" now, this is a different one, where you, like, is this personal people who have the water that pass through their, their backyard or something like that, are they responsible for it? No?
No, we, we carved out a lot of that, and tried to exempt the individual homeowners who are using, you know, washing cars in their own driveway and watering their lawns from any penalties. This is really directed at abusers, and is required by Stratford's general permit. So it's not that this council or that the administration is trying to force this on the public, it's required by the permit that Stratford has to discharge storm waters. Also, a lot of the businesses that you, you are mentioning and alluding to, in addition to Stratford having a permit, they are required to get their own individual permits from, from deep, so that presumably, deep could enforce it on individual violators also.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other question, Mr. Pia?
No.
Mr.?
Quickly, I, so, these businesses, they have to get licensed, they have to get permits, and those-
Right.
Not every business, but certainly major businesses do, they have their own individual permits from deep.
So they've, they know what's expected of them, and if they make a mistake, and we send them a letter, that's, we're just bringing them back to what they should've been doing in the first place.
Right, that's the, right, that's the intent.
That's the intent. All right, we'll call it to vote. All in favor? Just got reminded, we're gonna have to do roll call. I'm gonna start with Ms. Stancio.
I vote yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes ten-zero. Okay, Parks and Recs Committee, do we have another one? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, on the regular meeting of the Parks and Rec on November first, 2018, the following item was referred with a favorable recommendation resolved at the GeoCorp contracting change order in the amount of thirty thousand one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for installation of additional netting for the ball safety netting project at Penders, Penders Field B, and is hereby approved.
Second, Mr. Poissons, is there any discussion? I have a question, is this the infamous La Crosse House? Is this the one? Okay. All right, that's, not-
Hole side.
Hole side, yeah, okay. Okay, all just to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten-zero. Now we have the Town Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that there be a motion made to amend the agenda to add the following item to four-point-four-point-one, that the matter of Calafatis, K-A-L-A-F-A-T-I-S, versus the Town of Stratford also be added as part of executive session.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to, to suspend the rules, procedure for the council to amend for executive session as per Attorney LeClaire's recommendation.
Is there a second to suspend the rules? Okay, is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Motion passes ten-zero, now.
There should be a motion to go into executive session on the matters of Caserta versus Town of Stratford, and Calafatis versus Town of Stratford, to discuss pending litigation in executive session, should be the Mayor, Mr. Timniak, Town Attorneys Hodgson, LeClaire, and Florrick, and of course, the members of this council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, as stated, to go into executive session by Attorney LeClaire, with the members mentioned.
Second.
All right, and, and Mr. Downs as well, you should, I, I didn't mention that.
And Mr. Downs.
Mr. Downs, yeah. Okay, there's a second. Mr. Tiki, all in favor, going to executive session?
Aye.
Motion passes ten-zero.